Everyone could please rise. Vice President Burr will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
8:20.
8:20?
Yeah. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Vice President Burr. Good evening and welcome to the February 24th study session of the Livonia City Council. This meeting sets the agenda for the 1,892nd regular meeting, voting meeting that will take place on Wednesday, March 11th, and I'd like to note that it's Wednesday, March 11th because of the election that will take place on Tuesday, on March 10th. The only one missing this evening is Councilmember Toy. I don't believe we have any special groups here tonight. I do not have any announcements to make other than repeating one that I made at the regular meeting, which I'll make very briefly. We're offering our deepest condolences to our colleague Laura Toy and former, she's also our former city council president, on the death of her beloved father Glenn Toy on March 20th, I'm sorry, on February 20th. Mr. Toy was 92 years old. He served as a Livonia police officer. He was badge number six, something that he was very, very proud of. And tomorrow, there will be a visitation for Mr. Toy at RG and GR Harris Funeral Home on Five Mile Road from 2:00 until 9:00 p.m. with a short memorial service at 7:00 p.m. So our condolences to Councilmember Toy and her family. Council, does anyone else have any announcements that they'd like to offer? All right, would anyone in the audience like to make any announcements? All right, seeing none, we will continue. This is a study meeting. There are no votes taken. The council members will, however, offer either one resolution or a combination of resolutions for each item. The resolutions offered may include an approving, denying, or referring resolution to a committee or city department for its report and recommendation. A resolution of no further action may also be offered. There are some items that will simply be received and filed for the information of the city council. Please note that all of the items on tonight's agenda will move on to the regular meeting of Wednesday, March 11th, where they will officially be voted on. If you'd like to participate in any of the agenda items that we are taking up this evening, please approach one of the podiums on either side when the item is called. You'll be recognized at the appropriate time. Generally, the petitioner, whether that is the city or a private entity, will make the initial presentation followed by remarks from those in the audience who wish to speak. So please come to the podium when the item is called. When you reach the podium, please state your name and if you'd like to, your address for the record so that your remarks may be properly attributed to you in the minutes for the meeting, and it will also let our television audience and council members know who is speaking to them. So we will begin. We're new business. Item number one is a request to waive the city's noise ordinance. This comes to us from Mr. Frank Greza from O'Malley's Bar and Grill to allow their annual, O'Malley's Annual St. Patrick's Day Celebration to take place. This year will be on Tuesday, March 17th until 11:00 p.m., and their address is 15231 Farmington Road. Good evening, Mr. Greza.
Good evening. I'm Frank Greza, 34175 Oakdale, lifelong Livonia resident, and thanks for hearing my petition. This is our, believe it or not, our seventh St. Patrick's Day celebration. Can't believe it. So we've now had it on every day of the week. We got all the way through and we've made it, so.
Even accounting for leap year?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. So we didn't get to do it twice. We didn't do it twice on Monday. This will be our second Tuesday. Just to remind everyone, in the past, I asked for a noise waiver until midnight, from 10:00 until midnight. Last year, we amended that and we decided 11:00 would be enough and probably best, and that's fine. So I've amended that this year that we would, I'm asking to stay the same. Everything that we're doing is exactly what we've done in the past. We've done it enough times now that it's, we've got a little muscle memory and it's going to go through that way. So we've got the support of the police department, fire department, building department, and we just would like to ask for an extra hour on the noise waiver.
And the support, I'm sure, of many leprechauns.
And President.
Certainly. Good time ahead by all.
Vice President Burr.
He said this is her seventh. I guess this is the fifth time I've gotten to hear your petitions, and I'd be happy to offer an approving for consent if there's no objection. This has been a great event, I know, each year, so. And thanks for being willing to work with, I think, with some neighbors maybe that complained about it last year or had concerns and appreciate being able to work with that.
No worries.
But it worked out, so, thanks.
Gets me home an hour earlier.
Yeah.
Councilmember Jolly.
Thank you, Madam President. Madam President, just referred to leprechauns. I'm, every year, quite disappointed that you don't dress for us as you do in the commercial. I think this request would be a little bit more compelling if you were to do so and maybe next year.
Or I'll come back on the 11th for the vote. In full regalia.
He thinks by example on that, so.
Exactly.
It would probably since you're a petitioner, not be appropriate for me to say that you are probably Livonia's favorite leprechaun, but we'll strike that from the official records.
I've always aspired to be.
Mr. Greza, this has been offered for the consent agenda, so you do not need to return unless you'd like to, and good luck on the 17th, and thank you for always being a good neighbor and good citizen.
Great, thank you.
Thanks.
Really appreciate you hearing it. Thanks.
All right. Item number two is the appointment of Daniel Label to the Plymouth Road Development Authority. This comes to us from the office of the mayor. This would be for a four-year term, which would expire on May 16th, 2024.
Good evening. Dan Label, 22626 Nona, Dearborn, Michigan. Thank you for taking the time and giving me the consideration for sitting on this board. Briefly, I've spent the last nine years in the Livonia Chamber of Commerce, and I've really enjoyed working with the three previous administrations of the city. I've served in the capacity of treasurer and chairman of the board. Currently, the chief financial officer and executive vice president of NYX, which is proudly headquartered in Livonia. We've got two significant facilities on Plymouth Road with more than 2,000 employees in the city. I find it to be a very important stretch for the city, and I've always believed it to be my obligation to give back to the community any way I can, and I feel privileged to serve and contribute my time and talents and look forward to doing so with your approval on the board.
Madam Chair, I'll be happy to offer an approving on consent if there's no objection. Okay, I think Councilmember Donavick.
Councilwoman White beat me to it, so.
All right, anyone else? Anyone from the audience? All right, Mr. Label, that will be on the consent agenda, which means you do not have to return to the meeting on the 11th.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for being here tonight.
Have a great evening.
You too, thank you. Item number three is a request to adopt a resolution proclaiming Friday, April 24th, 2020, as Arbor Day in the city of Livonia. This comes to us from Bill Craig, the Tree City Committee Chairman and Douglas L. Moore, Superintendent of Public Services. This is to be celebrated at 2:30 p.m. at Coolidge Elementary School at 30500 Curtis Street. Good evening, Mr. Moore.
Good evening, Council. Doug Moore with Public Service Division. This year's annual Arbor Day commemoration program will be held at Coolidge. The program will begin at 3:15 p.m. The letter indicated 2:30, but the school requested a later time of 3:15. We're going to plant three trees in the Pickford Street right away to commemorate the event. It's on the north side of the school. Each student will take home an evergreen seedling this year. It looks like they're going to be blue spruce. They're going to be about a foot long or a foot tall. And the state's forester is certified Livonia for its 23rd Tree City designation and our 18th Growth Award designation this year.
All right, Council. Mr. Jolly.
Thank you, Madam President. So as a previous council representative on the Tree Committee, I can say that this was the first opportunity I had to see Mr. Moore kind of in his capacity of working and doing his job for the city, and I was really impressed right off the bat with how he handled himself in regards to this and how knowledgeable he was. This is also a program that really is amazingly well-done, and it's a great opportunity for the children to see, you know, how important trees are and how important the environment is and to go home with a tree and all that kind of stuff. But, you know, a lot of work goes into this from DPW setting up the trees, really planting the trees.
Yes.
Some of the people there, like the tree representative and the students get to kind of throw some dirt next to the tree, but they're generally planted. But I just want to say kudos and good job, and I appreciate everything that you do.
Thank you.
I think Mr. McCullough is now the tree representative.
I am.
So we're going to have to get the tree costume out and have him wear it.
We've already, we've already had our meeting, and I think we just had to make a few adjustments to it.
We told him about that.
Yeah. I just, right now, where's Bill? You know, he bailed on you.
Yeah, well, he stayed home. He said I could handle it.
There you go.
He's working on the tree ordinance.
Yeah, yes.
All right, so.
I'll offer an approving for consent.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're kind of holding us in suspense.
I thought I was.
I gotta wear the costume.
All right, so Mr. Moore, that's on the consent agenda.
Thank you.
Item number four, I believe, is also your item. This comes to us from the Public Service Division for the 2020 through 2023 supplemental routine street sweeping program from budgeted funds. Mr. Moore.
Yes, this contract was bid in the Livonia Observer and on the Mitten website. There was no pre-bid meeting as the work description was well-explained in the bid documents. The bid opening was, for the project, was on February 11th. One bidder turned a bid in. It was G&amp;M Enterprises. They were our previous, one of two contractors used in the 2016 to 19 program. The city and G&amp;M have an excellent relationship. G&amp;M held their pricing from the previous contract. They are very responsive, communicate effectively, and their work is thorough. Funding for the project is budgeted in the 2020 budget. This work is also tied to the city's MS4 stormwater permit and meets requirements currently in place. The department is recommending that council approve the four-year contract with G&amp;M Enterprises based on their bid pricing.
Council?
Madam Chair.
Yes, Councilman McCullough.
Just to give a kind of the audience a background, when you refer to Mitten, that is the Michigan Intergovernment Trade Network, and basically it is like an online bid procurement website for cities. And so whenever we hear that, we know that everything's been vetted, and you obviously came up with one bidder. I'd be more than happy to offer an approving resolution for consent.
Thank you.
All right, so did anyone offer?
Yep, offered approval for consent.
All right, so you do not have to come back and see us on the 11th unless you'd like to, but we would welcome you to make that into another date night.
You might want to.
And we're always, in all seriousness, it's always very nice to see your lovely wife, Leah, in the audience, so.
Well, thank you.
Thank you. Sometimes it doubles our audience size, so thank you very much.
Yes, it does. Thank you, Council.
Thanks for being here.
He just knows we're not going to be mean to him with her here.
Yes, thank you.
All right, thank you very much, Doug.
Have a good night.
Yeah, thanks for everything you do.
Thank you.
All right, item number six is a, no, item number five is a request to approve the proposed 2020 sidewalk repair program. This comes to us from the Engineering Division to include three small target areas, one in Section 8, one along Farmington Road from Linden Avenue to Schoolcraft Road, and one along Merriman Road from Schoolcraft Road to Plymouth Road, along with scattered locations throughout the city. This is Council Resolution 784-82. Mr. Zalinsik.
Thank you, Madam President. It's that time of year again where we think about improving our sidewalks for the summertime as we go out. We look to take care of those areas that have been called in to residents, and again, part of our millage, we have trees that uprooted the sidewalk. We want to fix those trip hazards, make it safe for our community. As you know, Merriman Road is on schedule for repair between Schoolcraft and Plymouth, and we're looking to complete the repairs after the county gets done with their portion to make that corridor nice and safe for bicyclists and pedestrians. And again, looking for the remaining locations throughout the city. There's approximately 517. Residents will be receiving a letter sometime here in the near future, once we get the contract bid out and get the information and anticipate construction to start sometime after 4th of July. But people have, will have the July 12th to get those repairs completed, but it'll be all explained in the letter forthcoming to them. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zalinsik. Vice President Burr.
I have a question, Todd. So this one is a little personal for me because you've got my street on here, and I was a little bit surprised to see my address on here this morning. And just from a process perspective, after we get through this, what, I know we had a little bit of discussion before the meeting here, but what happens after we presumably approve this for further investigation of each of these addresses?
All right, so we go out, we provide an estimate letter to all the residents that may be impacted. Some are homeowner repair, some are city repair, some are both, some may be sidewalk ramps. But you'll get a little pamphlet in the envelope that says, "Why Me?" and explains its program. And then it has the estimate cost of whether it's resident and, you know, part of the portion may be paid by the city due to the tree. And then you have a certain timeframe, and then there's probably three options. One, to have the city contractor do it. You could hire somebody to do it, or, you know, the next thing is billing won't happen to the following year in February of 2021. So hardest part will be writing a check for that. We also have a hardship for people that can't afford it, maybe on a corner lot, anything over $400. We'll be able to do a hardship where they can delay that payment, but it's at a cost of 6% interest. But, so there's different options that'll be explained in the area, but we'll always give you an estimate letter and give you time to pay for that sidewalk repair or have a contractor or yourself do the work, but you got to pull a permit through the Engineering Department.
So can I take back my no vote on that council salary increase? I'm just kidding. In all seriousness, as I look through some of these streets that I'm more familiar with, it appears that, I didn't double-check this, but it appears it may just be every address on the street. Is that, when you have a target area, is that what I'm looking at here, that you just put them all on there for now and?
As of right now, because it's winter time, we want to be safe than be sorry. So some, again, if somebody only have a tree at one location or ramp, but we want to make sure we get the addresses listed, so we've been going between the weather shifts here, between the snow cycles to get the final information out so we can get it bided, because there is a timeframe. It takes a certain time, you know, we only have a construction season from, you know, May 1st to October 31st.
Okay, that helps me because I, I mean, yeah, granted, anybody gets a little concerned when they might have to be writing a check, so I'm getting to experience what we have about 500 residents every year experience.
Right.
But my primary concern here is just knowing the condition of my sidewalks. Be quite honest with you, I think that money can better be invested elsewhere, but it sounds like, it sounds like there's still a process to go through to understand the condition of some of these yet, so.
Once the resident or business owner gets that notification, typically asked within 30 days to get with us, we can go out and evaluate if there's a discrepancy. Obviously, we always, you know, it could be something that we didn't see or something that if you walk, it's a different way or something that may occur with the, you know, with the frost in the ground. So we want to make sure that we obviously vet that out, and we only want to make sure that we pay for whatever is necessary to be done.
Thanks. Oh, and I'll offer approving for consent if there's no objection.
Mr. Zalinsik, does Mr. Burr also have the option of having the four Burr children do this and calling it, you know, a summer, how I spent my summer vacation?
Tell you what, I'll hire them out if.
I would just meet the rec center and play at the pool.
We can re-mars at the pool.
Councilmember Donavick.
Madam Chair, through the chair, Mr. Zalinsik, Todd. You mentioned one of the options for homeowners is to hire up their own contractor to get the job done.
Correct.
If a resident chooses to do that, what cost does that resident incur from the city then?
So typically, if they want to do the sidewalk, there's a $35 processing fee for that permit automatically. The sidewalk is $25 if you want to place just the sidewalk, so the sidewalk could be 25 plus 35. If they want to do the approach, the sidewalk, that's $50 for the approach, so it's $75 plus a $35 processing fee. So it just depends on what the homeowner wants to do. Sometimes they may do the private drive behind them. There is no cost of that. There's no permit necessary for that. So it just depends on what they want to do, but the minimum cost is 25 bucks for the sidewalk, $50 for the approach, and then the processing fee for the engineering permit is 35 bucks.
And correct me if I'm wrong, if a resident is redoing their concrete behind the sidewalk, they do not have to pull a permit?
That's correct. It's on private property.
Now, what happens if they want to extend their driveway, hold another lane? Do they still have to get approval from the city for that or no?
On the private side, as long as they don't adversely impact the drainage to the neighbor, they can do that. The drainage's the biggest issue. They want to do it in the right of way, they have to get a permit through us to widen that. We have to check, make sure there's no utilities that are going to be buried, any stop boxes or gas shut-offs or utility poles or fire hydrants. We want to make sure that they don't hit that with their vehicle, and they can't exceed a certain width of the drive approach. So there's certain ordinances we got to follow, but we ask them to come in, we can take a look at each individual case and work with them to get their driveways approved and work with a particular individual. Thank you.
Madam President, one, through the chair to Todd, you also have to make sure that the sidewalk's got to be four inches and then the approach has to be six inches, correct?
Correct. When you widen.
I know this because I was an inspector when I was in my college years, so I just want to make sure Mr. Donavick hits the depth.
We do follow Wayne County standards where a lot of the driveways that are in the older part of the city were four inches thick. We see them heave, so we want to make sure that most people widen their driveway as Councilman McCullough had mentioned. They're six inches thick, one flag, you know, beyond the original drive approach, because people do end up widening their driveways, and then we want to make sure that's where most of the trip or heave area occurs, whatever, from people driving on it. So a good point, Councilman McCullough, make sure that they follow the thickness, six inches, and then everything after that is four inches. So appreciate you bringing up that good point.
All right.
Madam President, if I may, just real quick. Mr. Zalinsik, so I've noticed somewhat recently, I'm sure it's gone on for years, but I only noticed recently that in certain places where the concrete has heaved to where there is a significant difference between different slabs on the sidewalk, there are, there are sometimes like blacktop patches that are used to kind of even it out a little bit. Is there a process for the city to come out and do that, or is that something that's been done by private homeowners?
So what happens is we get a complaint from a resident who is concerned about a sidewalk. It could be a liability or trip hazard issue. Once we find about it, we will make sure we let DPW know it. They come out and temporary coal patch it.
Yeah.
It's just a temporary coal patch because of the, again, explained, from May to October 31st, we can only do construction at that time. There are some instances where we do, we call grinding with precision cutting, which they go out, typically a tree has heaved up the sidewalk, we replaced it 10 years ago, and there's a vertical separation. Instead of replacing that flag, we can grind it down for a cheaper cost, about 50 bucks instead of 175 to 200 to replace that flag. So that is a good point. People see the blacktop, it's just a temporary fix until we get that permanent repair done during the appropriate time, doing what we're doing here today, getting the addresses identified in case somebody sells their house or passes away, and we can make sure we're notified.
Okay, and so if residents are out there and they think that they need to call and report their own sidewalk or somebody else's because it's a potential liability issue, they would call DPW to do that?
They would call Engineering at 734-466-2571. Call Engineering, we'll coordinate with DPW at those locations, we'll log it in, and we'll get with the DPW to have that coal patch.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
All right. Do we have this? I've lost track with all the discussion. We have it on consent. Okay, that's what I thought. Okay, thank you. Mr. Zalinsik, though, you do need to come back.
Mark would miss me if I didn't.
I know. That's my new favorite joke of the year. Everybody's going to be real tired of it soon, but anyway. All right, moving on to item number six. This is a site plan petition. This comes to us from the Planning Commission regarding Petition 2019-112-08-16 submitted by NC Designers and Contracting Incorporated requesting approval to construct an addition and remodel the interior and exterior of the existing gas station. It's a shell located in the southwest corner of Six Mile and Farmington Roads, 33411 Six Mile Road in the northeast quarter of Section 16. Mr. Teramina?
Thank you. The council will recall this property. It was recently rezoned from C1 local business to C2 general business. This is a site at the southwest corner of Six Mile and Farmington Roads. Petitioner is proposing to construct a small addition to the existing gas station as well as make other improvements to the site. So the existing building on the property is about 1,500 square feet. It's one-story in size, and you can see from this aerial photograph, the building itself is positioned somewhat at an angle to the intersection. There are two sets of gas pumps on the property. There are four points of ingress and egress, two from Six Mile as well as two from Farmington Road. So the addition would occur on the north side of the existing building. It would measure roughly 578 square feet, also one-story in height, dimensions of about 19 feet by 27 feet, and the main purpose is to provide the station with additional retail space. So upon completion, the building would be about just over 2,000 square feet in size. The addition, any portion of the building is required to be set back at least 60 feet from major road right-of-way. In this case, the existing building is 75 feet from Farmington Road, but only about 38 feet from the right-of-way of Six Mile Road at the closest point to the addition. So that would require a variance from the zoning board of appeals. The, excuse me, the parking for the gas station is computed at a ratio of one space for every 150 square feet of usable floor area. In this case, there are a total of 12 parking spaces required. The site plan shows 10, so it would be deficient by a couple of spaces. We'll note that many of the people that patronize the convenience store are persons who are already parked at the gasoline pump, so it's typically not an issue that we see as long as they're close to the required parking. But again, something that would have to receive the approval of the zoning board of appeals ultimately. So looking at the building itself, this is what it would appear. I think most people are familiar with the old Shell gas station, the style that is seen throughout some of the older Shell gas stations. This would be completely remodeled. There would be three primary materials. There would be vertical metal panels, that's the gray material that's shown on the rendering here. There would also be composite siding used, that's the dark brown material shown on the rendering, and then limestone panels, which would occur on three of the four elevations. The existing block that's along the rear of the building would be repainted. There would also be, on the top of the structure, a 16-inch-high crown molding, and that would be continuous around the building. That would be made of ephes. So altogether, the building would be about 17 feet in height on the south side and 19 feet in height on the north side. So it would raise the height of the structure, the parapet. That's designed really to conceal the mechanical, any mechanical equipment that's on the building as well as the existing peaked roof, portions of which would remain on the structure. So the Planning Commission spent quite a bit of time studying this, requesting changes, including adding limestone to the building, adding a window to the building, and as well as looking at the landscaping plan. The petitioner has submitted a fully detailed landscape plan that restores much of the landscaping on the site, something that was very important as part of the Planning Commission's review of this. And with that, Madam Chair, they're recommending approval of the site plan they submitted to you this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Teramina. Council, questions? Councilman McCullough.
Madam President, thank you. So I'm very familiar with the Shell station right now, and I want to applaud you taking the chance, you know, upgrading, making these significant upgrades, because just the renderings, they do look very nice, the mix of limestone. The one question I do have is, do we, this is through the chair to Mr. Toramina, do we require sample boards to be submitted during the planning process?
We do in most instances, and they did take a look at it in this case. I'm hoping that he has a sample board, so he'll have a sample board, he'll be able to show you.
Okay, perfect. Yeah, I like the mix of the metal panels with the composite material, the limited of the ephes. I think it's a great plan, so thanks for coming forward.
Vice President Burr.
Yes, sorry, I thought you were running. That's why I was hesitating. This is, I have a few questions, but just a note of clarification on the elevations,
the west and the east are mislabeled, so just if you might want to fix it. I'm not trying to outsmart anybody, I just noticed, didn't want to make sure that it is corrected. When we first talked about this for the rezoning, just refresh my memory, I had it in my head that they were rebuilding a building. Was that talked about at one point, or was this always a renovation? I see someone coming to the podium here.
Good evening. Ali Hamush, I'm the owner, actually, of the Shell gas station, Six Mile and Farmington. Yes, I remember, we, we talked about this one, the rezoning. It wasn't actually a complete rebuild, it was only a renovation.
Okay.
That's correct.
I just want to make sure I wasn't making up things. How, today, how many parking spots do you have today? Actually, let me just cut to the chase. Is, are we, does this site plan have an increase of parking over today, or is it the same?
My name is, my name is Nasser Shuker from NC Designers and Contracting. I'm the architect who's designing this gas station. Practically, we reorganized the parking, and I believe we did not lose any parking. We had one where, actually, we, we took one from the, where we put the addition, I think we had the handicap over there, and we moved it to the other side.
Correct.
And pretty much, I mean, we did not take off any parking. I mean, we adjusted everything, so it would fit the right parking.
The reason I ask, and I just, as I should have done before I asked the question, I just pulled it up on Google Maps, and it looks like it's the same.
It's just we are.
Yeah. And I'm not concerned about whether you add any. My, the, what I was getting at was if, if you were gonna, if we were forcing you to have more parking than what you have today, which from my experience driving by there, I don't think you have excessive parking today, I saw maybe an opportunity for more greenery versus parking space, but it looks like you're basically keeping it the same. Still would love to see that, but I'm just glad to know that we're not forcing you to put more pavement in, so. And the last question I had is irrelevant now, so I'm good. Thanks.
Madam President?
Yes, Councilmember Donovan.
So if there is one thing I learned from our previous colleague, Mr. Kritzman, it was the importance of dumpster enclosures. With the improvements that you're making to this building, will you be doing anything to the dumpster enclosure to have it match the building? Because if I recall correctly, its, its current state is probably not up to the building that you're proposing.
Actually, there is an existing masonry, a dumpster enclosure, and, I mean, we, we can like match the gates to the panels that we're applying on the building.
That's.
But the, the, the masonry itself, it's block, and we can paint it the same color as we're doing in the back of the building. So that would like make it a little bit like colors that we're putting now.
I, I appreciate what you've offered here, and I think just because of the situation that you find yourself on, and how visible the dumpster enclosure is because of the positioning on the lot, that that might be appropriate, and it would be welcomed as well, just because it is quite visible from the roadway.
Madam Chair, if.
Is that something that I have to offer specifically, Mr. Taramina?
We will incorporate that language into the approving resolution.
Thank you, sir.
Councilmember Donovan.
Through the chair, this might be for Mark or the petitioner. The existing awnings where the gas pumps are located, is that being updated at all? Are those being moved at all? Because a lot of times you see these gas stations update their building, but then they leave the existing awning, the columns, whatnot, the same as they were before.
It's my understanding the canopies will remain as they are today, but I'll let the architect or the owner respond in detail on that.
Normally, the imaging on the gas stations, it's when an owner signs with the jobber, they offer to redo the whole image on the, if he, if he stays Shell, then they'll keep it Shell. If he moves to Mobile or Marathon, then they'll change, they'll do the changes on the imaging. But in terms of, let's say, columns, we might, we might put brick around the columns, they might, I mean, it depends on the budget that we're putting. Either he'll break the columns, or he'll repaint the columns and the canopy from the inside.
And the canopy, that's just a vinyl wrap?
The, the canopy itself, it's a steel canopy, and the outside imaging, it's all, comes from Shell, and they'll just bring, the company just get them from Shell, and they apply them on the canopy.
And the, go ahead, sorry.
When did you have last changed the image on this?
Yeah. As Mr. Nasser said, we don't have control as far as what we can put colors on the canopy outside. So this is dictated by the supplier of the gas, which is Shell. So obviously, on that, when we refer to the canopy, is the columns of structure and also the vinyls that you talk about. So the vinyls from outside will stay the same. We're gonna either brick the columns, or we're going to paint the columns.
I really love, this is a beautiful building. I love the combination between the wood composite and the metal and the different elevation points. I would just hate to see so much effort go into the beautiful building and then miss the columns to really tie everything together.
Absolutely.
So I hope you take that into consideration.
We're going to actually marry all of these things together in order to have a great view to the station. Thank you.
Councilmember Jolly.
Excuse me. So this is probably for Mr. Zalinsik and Mr. Taramina, whoever wants to chime in here. When we do these gas station site plan approvals, at any point, are the canopies re-inspected for their safety? Because I mean, I think over the course of the last five years, there's been at least two instances that I know of on Eight Mile Road, once in Livonia, and I think once in Southfield, where the canopy became so rusted at the bottom that it actually fell down. So are we re-inspecting these at any point along with the building updates and the renovations, or no?
That would be a question for Jerome Hannah, the Director of Inspection, if they re-inspect these at the appropriate time. But I don't know if they're doing a citywide inspection at certain intervals, but that would be something for the Inspection Department to answer that question.
The Inspection Department does conduct annual inspections of commercial properties. It's something that they had gotten away from a few years ago, but they're back fully staffed and are able to do that now, and we work with them quite regularly on these issues. When it involves maintenance, oftentimes we communicate directly with their staff on, on things that needs, need to be addressed. More serious items, which you're referring to, like the structural elements, that's something that, that they would pick up as part of that inspection process, absolutely.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Thank you both.
As a matter of fact, I had them on my place, I think, three months ago.
Okay.
The instructor.
It's good to know. Thank you.
Who else? Yes, Councilmember McCullough.
My ask, petitioner, do you guys have the sample for the wood, like, I just want, I'm just curious, I just would like to.
It's fine.
It's a hardy board.
Yeah.
Similar.
It's a rapidly renewable product. Thank you, sir.
Well, after confirming that we're using hardy board, I'd be happy to offer an approving resolution for consent.
I know Mr. Burr, or Council, Vice President Burr had a question or comment.
No objection. I do have, I asked you about this once before, and I, I almost hate to ask this publicly because I just, you'll know why when I ask it, but you've got, you've got the bars on the door today, and I know I asked you that last time. Just an honest, practical question. Why, you have all those windows that you don't have them, does that help you to have them on the door?
So I remember the question that you asked me last time in the rezoning, and I told you once we have that total renovation, I have to actually take this out. More likely, I'm going to replace the door to have it a double, actually, double glass. The rest of the doors, all the windows have double glass on them.
Okay, that answers that.
But this one does not.
Perfect. That answers that question.
And I had two incidents here, unpleasant incident, basically forced me to do that.
Well, and it's, it's jarring for any of us to see it, and it's with a new building, I hate to see it. And it's one of those things that if it was a, it doesn't appear to be a pervasive problem because you're really the only gas station anywhere around that has that, and so it just always kind of jars me when I see it. With this renovation, I just thought, man, I wonder if there's, you, you've answered my question. That'd be great to not have those there anymore. I don't want you to leave your business exposed. I just, based on knowing the area and what I see around, I questioned whether it was necessary, so.
Yeah. The only reason was because most of their gas stations are 24 hours, and mine is they close, we close at 12 midnight.
Okay. Thanks.
All right.
Oh, Madam President?
Yes, Councilmember Jolly.
Okay. So our city ordinance requires that three air should be provided and dispensed at the gas, at every gas station in Livonia. Is that currently the case at your place?
Mr., I can, that was an issue that came up very early in the Planning Commission review, and in fact, during the review process, they, the Planning Commission would not, would not act on this item until that issue was addressed, which it has done, so.
It was brought to my attention by a resident who's a frequent bicyclist in the area who probably utilizes the air more often than.
Several of us.
Yeah. He might be an attorney as well, I'm not sure. He sure likes riding bikes, though. Thank you.
All right. So we have a approving resolution offered by Councilmember McCullough for the consent agenda. Are there any objections placing this on consent? All right. Seeing none, it'll be on the consent agenda, so you do not have to come back on the 11th. So thank you, and we look forward to a beautiful new gas station. Thank you. Thanks, Mark. All right. And now we move on to our last item on the agenda tonight. This is a proposed amendment to the Livonia Code of Ordinances as amended.